The letter department. I guess the way it's a little bit more background on it. One more.
Yeah, I think if you're willing, um, in our new background thing, the other thing we're waiting on. And one of the.
The director's history from my state, but otherwise I think it's okay for me to get any approval. But offer them a job.
And just set a start date based on when we get that back. Kind of a provisional offer and appointment I think you could do.
To approve it?
Yeah.
No, it says he'll bring you the, the.
Well, they ain't gonna hurt.
But that way he, they can start.
Or. Yeah, they ain't gonna hurt. It's just ink on paper, so.
Well, I'm making a motion. He can hire the two bending of the backdrop coming out on it. And that way you can start.
Yeah, you could have an idea.
Well, maybe, but I mean, if everything comes back and you get started right away, right? How you doing at this point?
Well, yeah, with that.
Without waiting for the rest, at least one of them.
So if you get one going, then go on to handle it.
Motion second to approve hires. It's all worked out. Any other discussion? All in favor, aye. All same side. Motion clear.
Jim told us about the saplings and the hitches and stuff. And the weed board was for Randy attacking the school in the face. Maybe we might need to cover that. Didn't we by consensus agree that that idea?
The weed, the weed board was a hundred percent in favor of Randy spreading saplings in the county road hitches and county property. There's trees growing, whether that's supposed to be hit with some ice, so get them out there where they can grow up and become a problem.
Well, that's good. It is some highlight color. Yeah, and we've got enough of, yeah.
Do you remember that was done for you?
Four years ago, they used to. They drowned one. But do you have any to stick your question?
I think it'd be.
There was certainly a consensus.
Yeah, and the weed board was a hundred percent in favor of.
If you want to cover the small structures now.
Yeah, it's not that coming up all good.
You just wear them.
If you don't mind.
Other than that, I think that's all right, yeah.
What? Jamie?
Yep, I'm Doc.
Ken? Always tell them quick and say, yeah, I'm living. You just talking about the blay again, blay, egg land, joking?
Yes, with those channel lakers again, that just provided all the information that I've kind of compiled over the last. It's taken me quite a long time, actually, to kind of get those foot sheets. Did you guys look at them and have any questions about what they all mean? The one that you want to probably pay the most attention to is the one that's the sheet is to correct the soil. So it has the list of every soil type, including those channel leaders.
The red ones are the changes.
Right. So you can see CNA and CNAC. So CNAC is right now called, coded as a non-property with a point four soil rating. And you can see that the dollar per acre is six hundred eighty dollars and sixty six cents. But the dollar per acre for CNA crop is one thousand seven hundred seventy-two oh four. But there's only fourteen acres county wide that have that soil channel acre. Does that make sense?
Yes.
Okay.
What would the total be?
Okay, so you scroll all the way to the bottom. So our total acres county wide are nine hundred twenty-eight thousand six hundred when you round it up, seventy. So nine twenty-eight, six seventy-eight. Of those total acres, only twenty-one thousand three hundred and seventy-four are values. Are coded as channel leaders. Which results into basically two percent, not even two percent. But if you look at the dollar amount, it, it looks really high. Cause the increase in value of those is going to be seventeen million.
Out of one point six billion.
Right.
So it's a drop in the bucket.
It's a drop in the bucket. It's a drop in the, it's point zero one percent price increase. Even though when you say seventeen million dollars to people, they'll be like, whoa. But really it's not that much money. So what I'm doing, this is just all informative because I just want to be out there so everybody knows what I'm doing. To correct things. I do have a letter. I'm still in the air of whether or not we're going to include that. Um, with the valuations that go out next spring.
Would you include everyone or do you?
There's two hundred and fourteen property owners. Um, I'm currently working on that spreadsheet that are being affected by these channel leaders. They don't roll out of, I don't know how many thou- thousands of, you know, money, like. But I just haven't decided because I don't know how big of a can of worms I want to open. I don't really think it's that big of a can of worms because when I look at a lot of them, like I said before. Some of them are already getting a discount for having marsh or, um, there's. Yeah, there's all that kind of stuff playing into effect. So now I'm looking at them, you know, as I, if I come across one that I can see where the, the channel goes down and. So I can make an adjustment just by looking at that myself. Saying, yeah, I see that this one, we're going to raise it, but then I'm going to give it a.
Exemption.
An adjustment myself or to them requesting it. Anyways, does that make sense? Okay. I just want to get everything. Correct, I guess, so that we can use the GIS. So when I'm doing my split, I can look at the GIS map. And use that versus having the cap dot because we've decided. Back in nineteen eighty-eight, they decided to have these channel leaders. You have a question? Why is very?
So it's one tenth of what we mentioned?
Yes.
Okay. How many counties are using the same GIS program we are and are affected by the channeling?
We're the only county in the state that did this.
Okay. So we're going to be back with.
Right, we're going to be, yes, we're going to be back with the past because they, they gave adjustments already. And if you're, you know, other directors in the state, they'll say, well, they're already getting an adjustment on that certain, certain soil type anyway. Because if you look at the definition of that soil type, it says that. Clay, flat, you know, it says what that particular soil is. So you're already already getting an adjustment on the soil.
Are you looking for any action from us today?
No, this is just basically informing, information to be transparent. So, you know, those that actually pay attention and read what's going on, they know prior to it happening.
But at this point, you don't have.
I don't need, need you like to tell me yes or no or.
Yeah, I get that. But at this point, you don't have this classified.
I do have a current spreadsheet right now, but I did not write that to you because I'm still working on that. Is that something that you and my post?
Well, I, I mean, just the, uh, I mean, it would be look at, um, just to make sure. I'd see if there, you know, one landowner that's getting.
Um.
Majority of the corrections or of disproportionate.
I am currently done with one soil. There's four soils. If you really look at that spreadsheet, there's four soils that have the most acres. Um, that are being affected the most. So those are the ones that I'm really looking at because the ones that have eighteen acres. That's like, like just the drop in the bucket. They're not even really going to have that much change at all. But I get what you're saying and that's what I'm thinking right now. And so those landowners that if I see that, oh my goodness, Sam Simpson is getting, you know, ten thousand acres or whatever.
Is the letter that you're talking about? A letter that you're talking about in the next line when you mentioned that.
Yes.
Post letter.
It's a letter I have ready and so if I, if I deem it necessary, I can extend it with a valuation. But that's just, it's all just informative. Thank you. I've spent a lot of time on it, so.
It looks like it.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome.
We have a question for Jamie. Pardon me.
Yeah.
Who went to the post office with that big grant fund and stuff, so going to base now?
Do you want to do a question?
We can do it.
Okay, yes, let's do the flat for weight to approve. Have a motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion second to approve the weightless track flat. Any other discussion on that?
Anything in order and?
Yep. Okay, all in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Aye. Both, both same side. Motion carries. Okay. Um, we'll move to the Sweetland's road agreement. Jeff, you were here to begin with. Sweetland had a, their road hall agreement. They would want us to approve what was the company getting.
First, we got all to do the baseline grid survey for the whole project now.
They had the ground survey first.
Yeah.
And I guess they did a pretty good job first time. I'll have to get your review after they do a good job.
Okay.
What's it?
Five thousand?
How much?
Yeah, it's five thousand. There, that's kind of, it sounds like to do the, the remainder of all the townships and townships that are going to be impacted on the big project they did.
Sure. Do you, do you have the map? Do you have the?
We need to get all, all of the township roads or.
I'm going to get a file of both with, with four counties or township roads, so.
Okay. Yeah, I don't think there'd be a problem. We did group there a lot of, a lot of pretty accurate.
Is this just to approve the, they used one and one of the.
Exactly. So this just approves the baseline road survey for the entire project now.
I move we do that and if we need to send it to the chairman, I'd put a move in, we will authorize.
I'll second it. We have a motion second to approve the baseline road agreement for the last project. All in favor?
Aye.
All same side. Motion carries. Thank you all.
Thank you.
I think that's everything. Some flag and voting. I should move now. Right. Let's work on the rural access projects. That's the blue button.
So Charlie is here to represent Miller Township. And Rich Nelson would have been here, but I sent out a letter telling him that the meeting was at eight. He made a doctor's plan and Rich did, so Charlie's been tending for him, but, um. One of the concerns that he had asked is that this deals with that bridge, if you can still call it a bridge, founded by Fulton Speed Lab. And whether or not two ten-foot culverts are sufficient to handle the water flow through there. Or if it should be examined by an engineer to determine the actual hydrology of that crossing. So I don't know if Brad has spoke to Jeff about it or not, but I'm just conveying that on Rich's behalf to, to whatever you were going to offer.
Rich just told me that we want, we might want to check it.
The same thing?
Before we check, start checking as far as yet because didn't want to end up short, you know?
Cause problems if you did.
Yeah, but ten foot.
Is there anyone that we can get to help us figure what they need to put in there?
You know, I need to call Randy O'Shea and he can give you half in five minutes.
Well, I, I think we should have that on, on all these that are going in. So we're not putting in too small structure or too big a structure. Because isn't that the deal? We're supposed to put back as close as we can to what was there, right?
That's true. And that's there. You can add the 404 for a minute. They still have to be, I'll still have to, 404 send in D A and R and they'll either. And D A and A on it. And, uh, you know, they, they only allow on time to grow for ten years, as much as the ten year amount, so.
Right.
I can always try to give them the most I could out of my trying to be twenty-five most time as a veteran. And they would have the family's case or, or that case from the ground. And they're only big off the ten year. Slugging man, saying on seven, they're going to count twenty-five milliliters south yet.
Townships with that pay.
Townships with them at that point, but. And we, we put. On Will Crick up here, like, oh, great, you know, the bridge would replace, we put two cans in there and then just go over there and have a little crick with the water which has growth. Two north anyhow. And I believe it's the same way down here. That's where Brad and I looked at it. We said that would be a good place to be with a little can. But if you want to have, have an engineer that can.
Well, you said Brad would have it?
Brad and I also have it before this funding come available. We have much, we can do it at the time.
Well, he's an engineer.
Yeah.
Well, I, I'm not saying engineer, but have someone like an engineer look at it and see if we're, if we're in fairly close compliance.
Yeah, or, you know, I could be sending 404 for a minute and see if they're okay with it. If they're not, they'll, they'll call them.
Does it make a difference if we tag on that, that this is going through this? Program? Will they help first?
Well, you know, when I talk to D A and R, they're so, so, I feel they're trying to want with a special provision for part of these small structures and they have. Didn't have it done yet. It was kind of like weird. I wouldn't have anything.
Well, that's the, this whole program, nobody's got the answer.
That's where they're at, so. But, you know, I think the best stuff is if you really want to know what it costs or if I was watching, if I could call Randy, I'm sure he'd tell me.
That would probably be the best, that would probably be the best way to go. I would say it.
I, uh, my chance ran into Don Q. Now, at Sioux Falls, when I was at that towns and townships conference, he was there for the full term. We got talking about this and he was, he was evidently against two ten-foot culverts. He says, they're not going to handle what that bridge handles. He said, I've seen wire third in the top of that bridge. And he said, I just, I just don't think two ten-foot culverts is going to do it. Um, Greg Bobra, in, in the discussion about this during that conference. He says, once we put two ten-foot culverts in there to install those structures, we've got like IP space between the culverts, half of the diameter of those culverts. He goes, and then they, after those culverts are installed, they measure from the outside of one culvert to the outside of the other culvert, which will be twenty-five feet. Which then makes it our responsibility. So if we have two ten-footers in there and they wash out, it's definitely your county's problem then because that one's a twenty-five foot structure. Is my, uh, Greg Bobra explained it. He goes, once, you know, we've got a bridge right now with nineteen and a half feet between the supports. But he says, whatever structure you put in, or whether it's a bunch of culverts or whatever, once it exceeds twenty feet, then it becomes county responsibility. So.
The only way you can do it is with, you know, you can't put three cans in there. Certainly work more beyond twenty. So that's the, the city good. Only alternatives are British, right?
Yeah, I don't see any reason, I don't see any. Three culverts or, or, uh, three culverts or something like that. But Don, Don was in favor too of studying that flow. And actually Greg Bobra, Greg Bobra says, you have an H H study, hydraulic and hydraulics, is that right? He said, if you have an H H study, you might find out that, that, that that's a county flow angle. Then I said, well, no way. I said, don't they say if it's less than twenty feet between the abrupt, that it's, that it's township? He goes, ah, no, that's not the entire classification, you know, the flow makes a lot of difference. So, so where do we go making decisions on this stuff when?
That's the way I have it.
Yeah, when you, when you get different answers, but.
Charlie, you think two cans is maybe inadequate also?
They went on a half full, you know?
They what?
Ten-foot culverts went on half full. Well, they said we come on half full at the other end, you know?
But you, but you, you better realize, we can't put in anything bigger than what's already there.
But it's, it's nineteen, it's washed out a little bit in the bottom, but it's like sixteen by nineteen what's running right now. Just two, five feet. I don't, I don't think two ten-footers, I don't think two ten-footers is going to do it for what we're getting from the landlords that have watched that creek for a lot of years. I don't think two ten-footers.
You also got to realize, you can't, just because the landowners want the water to get off their land really fast.
Yeah.
We can't, that, that's not what we're here to do. We're here to put in, what was that?
So should we go with, how should I?
I would say we should, we have to go somewhere because this board sitting right here, and I'll be the first one saying, I'm, I'm the one.
Yeah, you, Jeff. No, you, the question that I was going to ask from Richard, because it's actually the question that you asked, it will become the county's structure. And so his subsequent comment was on the longevity of it. How much do you invest in it now so you don't have to deal with it?
Yeah, that's, because Greg Bobra was clear, once, once you put two culverts in there, they then measure from the outside of one culvert, the outside of that culvert. It becomes now the responsibility. I would certainly think the county wants to make sure we get it right.
That's what involves, you know, end of the day.
Yeah.
Yeah.
On that, they definitely.
But, but you're right, Charlie, about the flow of culverts. They're not going to flow like a bridge does, you know?
Even a cement culvert.
I'm just, I'm just afraid with two culverts and I, I don't. I'm afraid two ten-footers in there, we're going to have that road washed out and culverts down the creeks and where's what my bodies, I don't know.
Let's have. The one, because he also been. Swelling road. Look at gravity.
This is taking a spot, water would flow west and then jump across the road and come back. Is it so, so slow?
The only, and I don't know where everyone's at exactly, but we do have a limited amount of time to award.
Again, we're at fifteen, I think it's. Cause that will, that's something else that likely be changing. Uh, uh, towns and townships have been recommending moving all these, uh. Deadlines ahead a couple of months. So the application will be later, the approval process, the award will all be ahead a couple of months later. Probably for this year, we're dealing with what lies right now, our deadlines. Well. So we, if Randy can look at that thing, we can approve it before January fifteenth. That's the deadline, correct, Jeff?
Yeah, that's, that's what I agree.
If we can, if he can look at that, we can approve this kind of daily week.
Or even.
I have that sound.
Yeah, yeah, you put on the agenda there.
But I, I simply put in the minutes to request from the engineer, because the brandings are available.
I, I, I think you better look at it because we, you know, like Luke said, uh, cameras and figures, getting the water out of their property, but it's backed up on their property. They're also.
Jeff, on the other, that's obviously the one another township we're, we've been discussing, but the other, the Olber, Burdette, Midland township ones. Are there, I guess you, you kind of looked at all of them, like, really?
Yeah, we're not there for the, we're trying to check, we're trying to run a talk. Pretty close. So we got, we got the quotes from Stu North and we got the estimates from Parkland Construction and Township's all time resolution at this point. And when I haven't got a mission, I'm never looking, just otherwise direct them, should be ready to go.
And I, I guess I, from what I've read and what I've seen, no, we just kind of look over all of. Pros and cons of what, what's there and I just know we need not to award. Yeah, there's those other ones, I guess, but what I can see, that they were like, you know, obviously they, you said they signed resolutions to pay for the twenty percent. Or however you might go above that, or, or if labor and time, I would see where we want to order it.
Pretty much money's enough to do, um.
Another, I took one of the awards.
Yeah, I, I come up with like two hundred and thirty-two total. And that includes them above and I, we got two ninety-five. And we got another one.
Three, yeah, we have over three anyway.
It's over three, you know? No, it's like two ninety-five.
Okay. And that would be, that would be no, no dollar for the two ten-footers as well, right?
Yes, yeah.
Well, I wonder if we, uh. Right? Um. All the, well, Brad, even the Miller township, would it have to have some, has to have an engineer look at it or someone that can give us the direction of what to do?
Yeah, I can call and find out and, you know, like, if you want to give an order, I can let you know if I find out that we've, we've got money, whether it's to double or triple. Or maybe if I recommend, we're ready, but I don't think so.
What if we just leave that one out? Cause we still have two meetings to go for fifteen.
Do we, do we need to order those culverts though by the end of the year to get that bid?
Yeah, if you want to get in on this year's bid, right, uh, I would assume the bid price is probably going to go up next year.
Well, the only thing is, we don't know, are we going to use pipe or should we, or are you going to use?
Yeah, it's true. We've got recognition.
We got to kind of figure out. I would have ordered, all of them, let that under till we get more information.
I'll send them that.
So Luke, do you want to be the sponsor of each of those three and Jim, do you want to be the second one?
You want to be along independently?
I think so. Just if somebody were to adapt to one, it doesn't impact the other. We're, we're going to do Olber.
I'm.
Olber. I move we award Olber. All in favor?
Aye.
All. I, uh, want to do Burdette. We, all in favor of awarding Burdette? And I oppose.
And I oppose.
Motion carries.
A motion to, uh, do the Midland Township.
Second. Motion of second to approve Midland Township. All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Post same side. Motion carries.
And I also want to make a motion to the Miller Township. When we get clarification on the direction we wanna go and what we can do, that it will be located. So if it happens that we need to get ordered before the. Have there, you gotta make sure that it would not exceed two hundred and ninety thousand?
Well, if it exceeds, we would probably pick for it out.
We get all, we put out a that, okay. Because we'll have funding for it next year. Okay. We'll have to second that. Well, I don't know, do we wanna, money matters, do we wanna wait? Because they've only got.
No, I think you're fine, you can.
Because I think we need basically provisional approval. Unless there's some catastrophic information that interrupts it.
Okay.
I have a motion to provisionally approve, no our township. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Post same side. Motion carries. So those, you're gonna order the tubes in?
Yeah, I'm gonna tell them to go. Now I have to send back guy and now we have a, 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 a big one that.
They all have that ball, right?
Yes, yes.
He was waiting on the mid, middle, I wanted help.
Yeah, I won't take one. And, uh, I can come find out.
I guess that's what I wanna know, that we, so if they got order back, that they can get it there too.
Sure.
So we're, so we're getting order this year so that, because it definitely, they're gonna be out next week.
One might be. Okay, I, I can find out that real soon, what did, we recommend, I need back to you.
So now the process is gonna be the order of the, that's ten, got eighty percent, roughly approximately. From the townships will do that.
Yeah, Jeff and I will look at those numbers and see that that ratio is right. There's more available to them than what we know.
Anyway, also, if there's money left, we can carry it over next year and grab it on another.
Yeah, we just have to pull it out of that fund. Cause the other thing, I don't know if you considered this, the, the culvert markers. Was that part of your plan too?
The markers?
Yeah.
You know, all you really need, I know, is the small, the many here, but it's, we got all the line up there outside the clear zone, you don't actually, you have to.
Okay. Cause I was gonna say, isn't that, that kind of project still supposed to happen?
Yeah.
In twenty-three? Cause I was gonna say, don't waste money on markers if that, you know, it doesn't look like it's gonna happen.
Yeah, I, I got a call from them, they put a bid a couple of weeks ago. Had one more, crazy, they wanted to come and propose tonight. And they said he was sending his bids last week. I have to say that happens next year.
Is there any other discussion? We'll, we'll access. So you get. That make a drink.
I think so. Just get somebody here to put them in.
Yeah, all right. Um. Jim. You wanna talk? About, we gotta touch on some of that.
We got, we got one more thing on there.
Well, what my suggestion is on the saplings. The, uh, weed pest board has authority to declare certain weeds as noxious. And so they could simply add those saplings in whatever dimensions they wanted to, to the county list of noxious weeds.
Basically any tree growing in, in the.
Oh, that groundways to be removed like all, you know.
So, uh, get them a sprayer before they're a real problem. Which seems like common sense. And do you think we, do we need to declare trees a, a noxious weed or?
The only reason I would say to add it to the list is just to formalize it. So if somebody like the Arbor Day Association comes after you and is, and defoliating the country.
They do that, they do that. I think it would be more likely to come after us and declare trees a noxious weed. They have to get.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
Even if you just put saplings growing and go with the ground?
It's easy to declare, like you can't have any.
Well, exactly, so it's just.
Jumping out there like.
It's just information.
Okay.
To directly for Randy, that's, that is, that is one concern I do have.
Because there's a lot of trees growing in ditches where it follows that, follow that.
He comes along and sprays and did drifts and two weeks shelter belt. The county might find out how expensive trees are. Because if you kill my tree with my shelter belt, the county, county's got no money.
Maybe we should buy some shears too.
Well, I'm just saying, when you're spraying alongside a line.
What?
If you're spraying by hand and wind drift, you'll drift in another tree. I, I've done the board spraying well.
Stuff that you gotta.
I mean, I made them new trees. Well, that's not gonna come, it'll, it'll, it'll go.
I killed a pretty good size.
I guarantee you, you don't wanna kill.
Sprayed this was outside of the children, was some bad luck. And, uh, and it, it picked up a, just a bunch of trees.
You know why all else that throws, that's things like?
Birds.
Yes.
Okay. I didn't know that until about three weeks. Does everybody know that and I didn't?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, so the other, the other topic, we haven't covered, uh, operations hours during spring season. Uh, it was the opinion of the board, weed board, that, um, maybe our weed department needs to start a little earlier in the morning. Maybe take some time off during the dead clock out, unless there's that shop work or something they can be busy at. Clock out during the wind part of the day and spray more in the evening. But we're, we're losing, we're losing too many hours that we should be spraying in the wind sound in the morning and evening. And we're working on a nine to five schedule from that off. We're missing too many good spray hours. And Randy agreed with me, should start earlier in the morning and work a little later in the evening and clock out during the day. Um, the other.
Does the weed board micro manage their office in any extent?
Pardon?
Does the weed board manage their office to some extent?
I don't know. I don't even know.
They have in the past.
Yeah. Other than the fact that this is the thing. This board doesn't really.
Fund it.
We fund it, but the weed pest board runs it, runs it, runs it. So if they're fine with it, I don't, why would we, if they're fine, we'll, we'll do what they want.
The other, the other topic that was brought up was Randy only had one employee, uh, all season. Remember we approved the hire of that second guy? Randy said he just never showed up. Never showed up.
I mean, Randy hired him, but he never showed up.
Never showed up for work. That's all. Jerome, Jerome Schakers on the board brought up that maybe we need to subcontract part of our spread. He says, uh, we got two, um, contractors right here in the county. He said, maybe we can, certain stretches of road to them, we can't get help. You know, and this would be kind of based on, um, whether we can get help. We, I don't, and, and Randy, we don't wanna go through another season like one. One part time, you know, seasonal employee, he said, we just, we just gonna deep up. Now, if they start earlier and spray later and get them better parts of the day, you know, they'll get more stuff coming. But, um. But we, if, you know, the weed board was in favor of, of subkind of, like, in some of this work if we need it. Can we wait and see? If we get help, for a while in the spring season before we determine whether we have extra help or not. Cause Randy seems to be having trouble getting extra employees there.
Cause they're not those over there that have, have not.
Are available at our time of need.
No, he, he's saying we can contact them and see if we could. But maybe, you know, we address that when we get down to time to go to work and start spraying weeds. Have them, thank you guys.
Thank you.
Um, that we address, you know, one of those contract solvers out. And if, if we could just do certain, certain roads, maybe a couple of roads in the county from one end and the other, I don't know. But if they said we can't, the board agreed that we can't have another season of, of not getting things covered like it should be.
I think we can, we can do those too.
Yeah. But, you know, discussing with Randy, he said, he said, yeah, I think we, we probably should start earlier in the morning. And get more spray, and then before the wind comes up at ten o'clock, eleven o'clock, whatever decides for a certain moment.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think that's something that can be addressed. You know, when it, when I'm getting down to see if people apply for those, see if there's doubts, if they don't, then already contact, you know. And even, I don't know, see if they've got time to spray some. But the only, the only way to really clarify that though would just be give them, you take this kind of road from this street to this street or, or whatever. They're, they're gonna take care of that, the weed department will take care of the rest. Cause we, we, we can't just have them run a ground, like, around the county, put their release and spray the, one might be fifteen minutes behind the whole. Second time, do that.
Sounds good. Well. Perfect.
Well, John, um. Because as I said last night, with calls of the, uh, the blast of the project over in the year, I might have a budget shortfall. I spoke with Doug about this, uh, looks like, uh, fifty thousand dollars. If I balance it out, projected ahead, I'm gonna be about forty-seven thousand, five hundred. But just to be on the safe side, I'm asking for a transfer of fifty thousand. However, also, as I said last time, um, between the insurance company, uh, with the sixty-one thousand and some change, and the state, which is exactly ten thousand, seventy-one thousand went into the, uh, went into the general fund between the insurance company and the, uh, and the state historical society, the ten thousand dollar grant. But that doesn't change the fact, because I was, I'm short and I need that, uh, money to say this to the end of the year.
But so realistically, the money just went into the general fund near the end of the year from backing out?
Yes, sir.
Well.
Well, it is the way I say it, but that's not the way the accountant pays.
Right, to, to you, to take that money we received last year, we would have to go through a formal supplementary process.
Right.
But the contingency fund has a hundred thousand, so it's.
That's the commissioner's contingency?
Yeah, it's just more streamlined to do the transfer contingency to cover his overage. And then at the end of the year, the contingency fund can't afford it, then we would do formal supplement.
Okay, are we gonna have sufficient, uh, monies in that commissioner's contingency fund in December being to this shortfall and the two we talked about earlier in this meeting?
Potentially, it's gonna be close. Cause the library also is open.
Yeah, I see that chime up.
Yeah, since, so like he said, those are occasions where we already have money input into the system. So think that this way, the money's in the checkbook, it's just not been assigned.
Right.
So right now we'll spend out contingency and then if we get that being here in March, we'll formal supplement.
How much went in that was insurance and what was it, the debit grant or whatever?
It was six, I can't remember the exact number, sixty-one thousand and, uh. Yes. I remember the report. And then it was an eight to ten thousand dollars that came from, uh, the, uh, state historical.
Well, do we need to approve that today?
Yeah.
Transfer the fifty?
Up to fifty.
But then.
Yes, please, I'm like.
But it, but it is, but it's money that already was intended for Will's department. It just goes into the general fund and has to be taken back out, correct?
That's one way. Yeah, in the real world, the basically, that's basically.
Actually, maybe you can, commissioner's.
Right.
I'll second, you can also go ahead.
Okay. All right, there were motion of the second to approve that. Transfer to that work. So we can get transferred in. So all in favor, aye.
Aye.
Post same side. Motion carries.
I did have just one thing that has come up, uh, just for your information and a recommendation about the elevator. The, uh, total construction solutions are proceeding, and Schumacher are proceeding. They are coming up with a super extensive middle that'll go to the engineer and then ultimately with us. There'll be, there's gonna be some decisions that need to be made, uh, some about the car and about schedules and about, you know, finishes. It's gonna be pretty straightforward, but I'm just told, get it as close as you can to what's there now. But there's still gonna be some color choices and some decisions that have to be made. And, and we're gonna, we're gonna pass them by the historical society. And there's also gonna be some scheduling issues. They expect to have this middle done sometime early in, early, uh, no matter, they'll, they say, uh, sometime early in January. I guess about the third week in January, they're gonna want to meet with us, uh, to, uh, get some answers to how to proceed. What I would suggest is keep the elevator committee together. And I have the elevator committee to meet with the contractors, the operator, the doors and the engineer. And he's, and making the decisions. And between now and the next, now and that meeting, I'll be confirming with the state historical society and make sure we don't have any problems with that. But there's gonna have to be some decisions made and that all that, so.
Who's the elevator committee?
You can.
Yeah, the sooner anything that happens, that's all the better.
Then the way I would, I think, like you said, is keep it, and I guess we're gonna go pay for this with us.
Well, I have paid. It's, it's basically gonna be aesthetics and decisions or approvals, I guess, right?
Exactly, and we'll run that based on schedule, based on the vertical scale, so. And, and, and that, we'll say that, we'll say as we progress through this one.
Luke, you're not clarifying, right? I'm gonna work it.
Well.
Why, you're clarifying.
It's gonna be pretty, it's gonna be pretty basic, I mean, they're going to repaint all of that out there to match the culverts there now, as close as they can get. Uh, they, uh, and they'll, they'll repaint all of it. The, uh, the camp floor, the only way they can match it exactly is to pull the frames out, you know. There's no way, that stuff is not my work, it's not gonna come out. So they're gonna have, they're gonna make it, they'll get it close. That's what I said, the state historical society, there'll be things like control panels and carving and that kind of thing that will have to be decided on. And I'm sure there'll probably be about ten dozen of them, I'm not talking, but.
That's the case.
Yes, sir, and they are moving ahead, they expect to have this meeting with us, uh, in, uh, in January. And they are placing orders for the equipment now, so.
How long of building construction at the beginning?
Well, I've heard six weeks.
And what best case scenario, when might that inspection start, absolutely best?
Uh, sometime, uh, I'm not really sure, sometime, uh, sometime this spring. Or in, in March or April.
So by the summer, we could have an elevator?
Well, we gotta have one, they, you know, they're in contract to have one by the end of August.
Yeah.
So, uh, now, picks my fly, but I doubt it. I mean, I, I think we'll get one by, I do think we'll get one by August thirty-first. I think there'll be one in here. But this schedule for six weeks and all dressed up and the supply chain being what they are right now. Uh, I think, in my guess is that they, they said the day of August thirty-first is the expectation of that one had problems. So I'm guessing.
We could be in before.
Yeah, we could be in before, but what I like to hear is gonna be the end of August.
Well, you might have it on here, Christmas twenty-three.
Did you come up with those sides? Did you come up with those sides in front of the elevator openings?
That's a good guess.
Could be in, I do, yeah.
Harry, it's like they're nuts. Nice.
I just wanted to wish, actually, I hope it's the one on the. I just wanted to ask, actually, I hope someone on the car has me.
Thank you, man.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Doug, have we not discussed the other library there?
Yep.
Do you still have something?
No.
Okay, I just. Does everything else is mine, so. Thank you, Jeff. The library is in the same boat that Will is.
In my projections, right now it's forty two thousand. Didn't think that would float. And so the reason I say up to forty two thousand is to do, I'm not out there to transfer that all at one time.
Do you need a motion for that?
Yeah. I can spoon feed it at some point.
Yes, yes, please.
Correct.
So there we go.
And I can turn, we add a hundred thousand right now?
Yes, that's why I said it's gonna be really close. But if I spoon feed it, we've got so much now, so I can keep you good home for these years and do a supplement we have to give.
Is there a motion?
Yep.
Jim.
Joe. I'll second.
Motion is second to approve that transfer as needed. All of the favor, aye.
Aye.
Both same side, motion carries.
Okay, and then in the bulk of that, it's primarily from.
Roof, roof, right?
Yeah, for sure.
Yeah, the original roof, I don't know if I put that in there. The original quotation for that was not that, for their statement is because insulation was added higher.
Wasn't insulation that agreeable?
It's a clause of.
So they, I, I didn't explain it on Brazil. I got, we wait.
We're in order to gossage.
Is that what, four in that one place?
So we just have to.
Well, I don't know if there's an extra insulation door or just because the plastic insulation was not available. I guess I don't.
I didn't see that.
I thought it was told.
They agreed the art value.
Because the insulation is what's on the back so far.
Yeah.
They couldn't get the insulation.
Okay, so the next item I have for you under audit is resolution twenty two dash thirty one. I guess it's under twenty eight, twenty two is the original budget resolution. When I submitted the resolution to the Department of Revenue, I did not carry it out to three places, which is one of the requirements that no letters be expressed. In three places, not two. Also, it's satisfied the statutory requirement. Otherwise, nothing changed.
Four places.
We can't say, I did four.
Just increasing.
This, because they're allowed, they're allowed to round, so. I wanted to show them that I took them into account.
Do we need to go in and?
Yeah, so you should pass the resolution.
I moved the pass resolution two zero fourteen dash three one.
I'll second it.
Pass the resolution to it. You have a good all.
Aye.
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 Aye. And then you wanna sign all these?
Please.
And then I send that back to the Department of Revenue. So while you're doing that, I have one. I had an under, under power supply, this is a battery backup. It was purchased in two thousand and six, I had to replace the batteries, then I have to finally repair it yourself. Shorted out, no more charge of batteries anymore, so. I, uh, discarded it, I need your permission to take it off, please.
Your motion, please.
So, do I have something?
All of her favor.
Aye.
Both same side, motion carries.
The, did you get something to do with it?
No. I, Carrie's had one in her bathroom, if I find myself needing one, she said she would be used.
Until the end of the year. We'll miss it all over again.
And you're saying, and you just lost the loser authority.
The next item is the public auction. And originally we had set out a list of property that was going to be circulated. And then the process of accumulated matters led to the discovery of other properties. And so what happened is, is you open up that link, you're gonna see the confirmed list of items that were sold. And then if I'd have got it in time, I can give you the second list of the items that were added. And so the way that the inventory system works is that I record all the items to be removed. And then in order to post it is when I need you to approve it. So in this part, you would only be approving the confirmed list of properties for some movies.
Second.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, all of them, aye.
Aye.
Both same side, motion carries.
So at the next meeting, I'll have the items that were additionally sold and recorded in the auction here. Okay, the next item is the local assistance and travel contingency fund. This is a, uh, reappearance of COVID money from Washington folks. They're owed the folks fifty thousand dollars this year, fifty thousand dollars next year, for the grant. I did submit the required paperwork to acquire that. Were eligible for it, I have federally, federal public lands here. If we didn't have that, we wouldn't be doing anything, so. U.S. Fish and Wildlife basically is our biggest federal consumer property. And so legislative audit has told us that anytime you apply for grants, it should be approved by the board because you have certain obligations. And we need to meet requirements. And so we need to get back on track of having grants approved by the board before people apply for them. So I'm here to tell you that I replied for this. So right, I can, I'd like you to take your own fit and approve it.
Can I ask you something?
Yeah, John, what can we start on?
It cannot be used for anything that is indirectly or indirectly related to lobbying. That is only streamlined. I think we approve it.
I'll second that. Any other discussion?
Hearing none, all of the favor, aye. Both same side, motion carries. Is that a, just about a, is that a given approved or does it still have to be?
Yeah, what they did is they pre-ordered all the counties that have federal lands. And then the county sent, we had to go in, register, put in banking information, and then they tell you, then we're gonna send it to you.
Yeah.
Do you have to reapply them, I'm sure?
Uh, I'm sure there will be, they did that with COVID too.
I got to sleepy Joe. What did I say to my life?
Okay, the next item is the disability rights, that's a link you can open up to your leisure. Basically, it was when the disability rights laws came and inspected the polling places. Um, and so we actually scored very well on that, so. It's a part of the monitors off some second vote that we, the elevator. So we went downstairs to vote, so we, we were checking.
We reported, one machine was placed two posts to wall with a wheelchair wheelchair, we, and the special workers moved away from the wall and were satisfied.
Well, we can't be caught going out and coming back.
That's correct.
Why?
I have that suggestion. Well, you know, I can really listen home, I can go to the manager and help people vote. But they won't let me go to the parking lot and help grandmothers vote.
Why?
Cause it's considered curbside voting. So is there some standing in curbside voting? Well, people who aren't necessarily anti-Jet might choose to curbside vote.
Would it be, would it be the, uh, public place that there's more people to see what's going on?
No, it, it really just, it's an oversight, I think, when people said they didn't want drive-through voting. I mean, there's legitimately people who, it's a common chore to get in and out of the car. I, I've submitted that as an item to be considered for legislation. Okay, the.
Don't lobby for that with your COVID.
I will not use, that's not, oh, obviously. Um, Society for Human Resource Management, I joined that so that I can get current information on dealing with employees and people with male knowledge in the first two years shortly. My next item is on the back page, and it is the transfer from the general fund to the emergency management fund. We're on forty two thousand, seven hundred and ninety dollars and seventy cents. We budgeted forty eight thousand for that purpose, and this is the government's share of EM expenses. And it was funded for from where you've been. Move to approve that.
Second.
All of the favor?
Aye.
Both same side, motion carries.
The next item is the transfer from commissioner contingency, we did that earlier, I just wanted to move it or delete it. The, uh, next item is the policy manual. And the employee conduct section, my notes that I took, will we discuss that? I couldn't because I'm old, so I'm relying on one of you guys to help me fix that. But I did use the welcome and the purpose. And basically, there's really no policy in there other than the purpose of the manual, but it is the beginning of it. And then our discrimination stuff goes next, and then the employee conduct, and then, so if you approve it, I can start compiling in a booklet format.
My, uh, Jim, I just, uh, talk, my concern was that only like that, I think that we caught, just get those notes in there.
Uh, I have notes on it, but like I said, I can't, with thinking I want to convey your guys' intent. Well, we can leave out the whole section on the wind living, and then if you feel it's an issue in the future, just pop it back in. Was that the only word you?
I had some notes.
Right, so I mean, I can just communicate with you outside the meeting with you that I am dealt, yeah, that's fair. So in this case, I would just ask that you approve the section called welcome and purpose.
So move. Second.
All of the favor?
Aye.
Both same side, motion carries.
In the correspondence, there's a notice of hearing for the water management board, this was under the gym of the last two meetings as well, the meetings are on, so I don't know. Um, really, the only thing that that does for us is like you should have lines gravel or something that makes you, makes you concerned about water management. And then there's also some issues with areas that are existing in there. It's available online, you want to bring it in less than any can. Otherwise, we'll probably give a summary in the future of what's in place. And my knowledge, nobody else has asked for an executive session, so we'll leave you to set a date for the final meeting of the year. What would you like that to be? Um, to be honest with you, I don't have a preference. We can do either the twenty seventh, twenty eighth, or twenty ninth. If you wanna do it for the evening, I don't have a problem with that either.
Yeah, I think we're gonna stay it every year, let's start the form early, it takes the worst for everyone, is always that option.
Sorry, I'm sorry, cause they're, they're without it.
That, those leaving that may be. It's typically been, historically, but if you guys have conflicts, I don't watch the school calendars anymore. You, uh, you won't get anything in and after that? Well, I, I sent out a memo, I think a month ago, saying, contact your vendor, make sure we did. Everything goes, I don't wanna pay this year's bills and next year's, let's play the water problem, then.
Call it a day every now?
Start with Tuesday, and three days for Wednesday was?
Yeah, we started, the fourth on Tuesday, like I said, it's.
Twenty seven.
Start with something that gives us the option to move this physically.
I was expecting that.
Well, we don't want it on Thursday, the twenty ninth.
Right, maybe before hell freezes over?
Yeah.
Oh, that's.
We don't want it on the twenty ninth.
Right. So you got the twenty seventh.
Well, that's right. Yeah, I was gonna say.
You're responsible for happy hour afterwards.
Everybody better be happy. Including yourself.
Yeah.
You're bringing, you're bringing, we'll be happy. Hey, I have, I was having a professional, a warning, it's a review date. Good evening, afternoon. I just do it evening as well. Okay, doesn't have to be a delay, it could all, you know. Six, three, seven, six. Then, or it shouldn't take it, it shouldn't take it for all.
Seven.
Seven, five, two.
Seven works for me as well. Okay, twenty seven, seven, three days, the next day. Here, all this, let us, for somebody to go through here.
What is anything else?
You gotta wait till everybody's.
What, what's on the twenty ninth?
Two, four.
Two to four.
Two to four on the five. I'll send you guys.
This is five only.
It's invitation only. They're not gonna look, they're all there.
We have a motion to, that's a good way to hear and know.